It is now 7:20 and the executive session has recessed. We will reconvene following the regular meeting. We did not want to detain those who are here for our regular business. So we will now move into the regular meeting. Today's date, Trandra gave too fast for me. Today's date is February 5, 2013. The time is now 7:21 PM and I apologize if we're running a few minutes late. I would ask that everybody please turn off your cellphones or else set them to vibrate. And thank you for your cooperation in this regard. Counsel will please come to order and I want to thank everybody who's here this evening and again apologize that we have a little bit of a late start. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the Lord?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you and Ms. Garrett, would you please conduct the roll call?
Bolton?
Yes.
Bernado?
Here.
Matei?
Here.
Miles?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Alaskas?
Here.
Back to consults.
For the record, a quorum is present and council may proceed with business. As a reminder to my colleagues, if you would need a recess, you just ask for a point of personal privilege. The first action item on the agenda is consideration of approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of January 15, 2013 and the special meetings of January 22 and January 29 and additionally the special meeting of February 1, 2013. Are there any corrections or comments? May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I vote for approval as presented.
Motion by Ms. Bolton.
Set.
Second by Mr. Bernado and may we have the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Bernado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Alaskas?
Yes.
Back to consults.
Yes. Our next agenda item is the petitions or communications oral or written and Ms. Garrett is checking to see if we have anybody who has signed up to speak. Thank you, Ms. Garrett. We have two individuals who've signed up to speak. The first one is Jenny Vincent. I believe I pronounced that correctly, Jenny Vincent? Thank you. Please come to the podium and if you would move that microphone to where it's comfortable for you. Yes, I think that's good. Welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank the council members for letting me speak tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
I also want to thank you for your service to the -- so you can turn it down. I would like you to know I speak for myself as well as others in attendance with me tonight. My name is Jenny Vincent and I served as Assistant Business Office Director at Mount San Rafael Hospital from April 2011 until November 1st of 2012. During my employment, I also served over four months as the interim Business Office Director. Myself, as well as others in attendance tonight, are here not as disgruntled former or current employees of the hospital, but rather as very concerned citizens. We are here to ask questions. Questions that the hospital owes the community answers to. It is no secret to many in the community and probably those of you on the council that we have serious issues with our hospital. I'm going to touch on just a few of the concerns we have. This is only the tip of the iceberg. More questions and information will be forthcoming in the near future. Mount San Rafael Hospital is a very critical part of the community and very important element in any further business growth in Trinidad and the surrounding communities. During the past few years, the hospital's financial situation continues to deteriorate. Physicians come and go at a rapid rate, six just in the past two years, and it's very troubling to see the trend continue. QHR has managed the hospital for several years and the hospital stated that when they once again renewed their relationship with QHR at the beginning of 2012, it would be on a limited basis only and QHR would no longer employ the CEO and CFO of the hospital. Since that time, the hospital board of directors hired Bob Quist as CEO. Bob is a former QHR employee and they placed an interim CFO named Tim Howard, who was a current QHR employee as interim CFO. Mr. Howard served as interim CFO for a year with Mount San Rafael. Most recently, they hired David Rollins, who was also a QHR employee. It is very disturbing to me and many others that after losing $171,066 in 2010, $1,147, I'm sorry, $1,147,624 in 2011 and over $1.1 million by September of 2012, the hospital would choose to remain with QHR as their management company. QHR has a history of lawsuits by other hospitals due to financial losses, fraud, et cetera. I'm providing you copies of information regarding this and everything that I say I have copies of information that I'll pass to you when I'm done speaking here. Why would the hospital continue to work with QHR after the large losses it has sustained? This is a big question that needs to be answered. They should have ended any relationship with QHR long ago. Also, why are they now employing a CEO and CFO who are connected to QHR when it was specifically stated they would not? The board members, in my opinion, either don't care or they're ignorant to what is going on at the hospital. We all feel the board members should be elected and not appointed. We all feel the board members and hospital administration really need to explain to the citizens and hospital employees how it is that they let the hospital get to the position that it is in. Also, it would probably be beneficial, in my opinion, to have an audit done outside of QHR doing it as other hospitals were actually significantly more than even reported due to QHR's mismanagement. I can tell you from working in the business office that we were averaging approximately $2 million in revenue per month. The financial problems at the hospital have a lot to do with the spending, not the revenue, which I brought to their attention many times. The hospital is paying outrageous salaries to certain employees and making purchases it does not have the money to pay for. Another issue is the community perception at the hospital. Many people have experienced poor service and substandard care and thus chosen to go elsewhere. And myself, we moved here two years ago from the Midwest. We're not from here. We knew nobody from here. I came here and accepted the position at the hospital. And I will tell you from our neighbors to friends that we've met, it's a common thing that they say they go anywhere but Mount San Rafael, which is sad because it's a nice hospital. And to me, it's sad it's gotten in our position. Many people are tired of establishing with a new primary care physician. Some patients have had to do this four times in less than two years. Even more unfortunate is the fact that despite the patience with this unacceptable process, their physicians are made to leave or forced to leave. The issue of the hospital's inability in retaining physicians is very troubling. Just recently, the hospital let Dr. Leo Lopez go. Bob Quist stated to Dr. Lopez that they needed more internal med doctors and not pediatricians. This made no sense since Dr. Lopez is not only board certified in pediatrics, but also in internal medicine. He is the only one in the hospital who is board certified in both specialties. I strongly suspect that Dr. Lopez is being let go because he too brought serious concerns to administration. It's very troubling to see a great doctor leaving while they choose to retain certain physicians who provide substandard medical care or have had sanctions from the Medical Board of Colorado. I would like to name a few. Dr. Porterfield is a family practice physician who currently serves as the medical staff liaison to the hospital board. Dr. Porterfield has had past problems with substance abuse, which marijuana, cocaine and alcohol, which is stipulated in a board order, and had lied to the Idaho Medical Board during his license application and has had to surrender his license to practice there. I will show proof to the city council that Dr. Porterfield is actually on probation with the Colorado Medical Board due to his past substance abuse. Per Dr. Porterfield's probation, one of the many stipulations is that he cannot take call in the hospital. What this means is that he should not be taking care of patients in the hospital during his probationary period. The hospital administration and worksite monitor, who I'm assuming is another physician employed at Mount San Rafael, are aware of this probation, yet they unknowingly allowed him to take call at the hospital since approximately a week after he began his hospital appointment. And I will show you from the Colorado Medical Board that actually a day after this was signed is when he began taking call. I have copies of the call schedules of the hospital. Why does our hospital have this physician employed and why is he on the hospital board? Why would a doctor with this history be hired and what would the citizens of this community do if they knew the facts? This is all public information on the DORA website. Many people don't know, they can go on there and look at physicians' disciplinary action. This negligent action on the part of the hospital administration emphasizes the fact that the hospital administration does not care for the safety of this community's citizens. They are willing to place the lives of the community's citizens in the hands of someone who might still be under the influence of illicit substances. I certainly would not want my family's care under him. Another physician of concern is Dr. Ronald Dalton. This physician has been advertised by the hospital as someone who knows cardiology. In a recent article published in the Chronicle News, he was described as the one responsible for running the hospital's cardiac or heart programs. Here are the facts. He was trained as an internist and pediatrician, but he never passed a certification exam for internal medicine, meaning he is not officially an adult doctor, he is certified in pediatrics. Obviously, he's not a cardiologist, yet he is a chief medical officer over the cardiac stress lab and being paid over $400,000 a year, which is almost twice what other doctors are being paid. EKGs and stress test results are being read by Dr. Dalton. Again, as I mentioned above, Dr. Dalton has no certification in internal medicine and no cardiology fellowship training. We have more concerns regarding this that we will discuss at a later date. As I stated in the beginning, I nor anyone with me is not a disgruntled former employee. I brought concerns to administration while I was an employee and even stated to them if I lose my job for telling the truth, so be it. I brought serious concerns to administration while I was employed at the hospital, including possible fraud and possible HIPAA violations, as well as other issues. I was targeted many times for telling the truth and even told the administration that it seemed they don't want to deal with the truth. And to me, that is why this hospital is in the condition it is in and that is why the public is fed up. We all feel enough is enough and something needs to change in order for our hospital to survive and for the public to feel they can once again count on Mount San Rafael to provide quality care and earn the trust of the community. It is essential that Trinidad can offer great health care to the community, to bring other businesses here, to bring teachers here to our schools and to ensure our citizens don't have to travel outside of Trinidad for their health care needs. Once again, thank you for your time and opportunity to share our concerns. And I have copies of everything that I discussed here.
You may not have to give copies to Ms. Garrett and she'll make sure that they're provided to the council members.
There's copies of the tax file showing how much losses have been. I try to have a copy down each year of the tax files, but I'm sorry, I ran out of these. So you do have one copy, but I was going to make more. It's QHR. And can I even point out that on Mount San Rafael's website today, it states, "We are a stable organization that is financially sound." To me, that is not an accurate depiction of what's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Now you do understand that the city council, the city of Trinidad, has no direct control over Mount San Rafael, but I will...
I felt it important because it does affect the city.
It does affect our ability to attract and retain economic development in the city.
That having been said, what are your expectations of us?
I just wanted to really bring it to attention. You know, I realize I'm going to have a target on my back, even though I'm not the only one standing up for this. I'm going to be attacked. I'm not saying anything that's not the truth. And honestly, while I was employed there, I was disciplined for telling the truth. I was disciplined for telling the doctor truth. When she asked me a question, I was told I should have told her I would look into that later. And I sat across the table from administration and said, "I'm telling the truth." As I said, I'm not from here and I'm actually appalled at the things that I have seen. And when I came, I thought really citizens were being a bit harsh on the hospital. But having been there on the inside, I see, I understand why they're frustrated. I understand their concerns.
You may have mentioned you were even on Capitol Call. How long were you there?
I was there from April, I believe it was April 2nd of 2011 until I was laid off the 1st of November of 2012. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next citizen is Ms. Era McCarthy. Welcome, Ms. McCarthy.
Thank you very much. I'm talking on the same subject. I don't have any inside information or anything like that for you. I think that the reason why we're telling you guys is you're our voice. You're our voice. I have two little babies. I'm sorry I'm so emotional, but I love my children. Anybody who knows me, you guys know I love my babies. We go to Pueblo for medical care and we always went to Pueblo because everybody told us the medical care here was so bad. Well, when I was about six months pregnant with my son, I was in a terrible car accident. The airbag broke across my belly. I couldn't drink water, I couldn't eat. Jay took me to the ER at Mount San Rafael and they couldn't do an ultrasound because I didn't have enough fluids, but they couldn't keep me from vomiting. They kept trying to give me pills to keep me from vomiting for about four hours. I had Jay take me to Pueblo, they gave me an IV, I was fine, the baby was fine. I went into premature labor, had to go on medication. I vowed to never go back to Mount San Rafael. Well, as you guys know, I have a newborn son and he had this horrible growth out of his belly button. I mean, I was worried about a hernia, I was worried about the drive to Pueblo. We talked to Dr. Lopez, he was the only doctor willing to see us right away, willing to see us without the paperwork being there first, just to make sure my son was okay. He took good care of him. It ended up being not an emergency, like he fixed him. And he's been the most amazing doctor. That's all I wanted to tell you guys and not just for me. There's been six families here. Hyomi at Commercial Street Salon, sweet little baby, he was very, very ill, he took care of him. And there's so many kids in our community that have like emergency situations. If he's there, he'll see the baby, he'll treat them right away. I can't imagine him doing anything that would have cost him to lose his job. If you get to know him, all he cares about are his patients. He told me how he loves Trinidad, how he plans on spending the next seven years, maybe the rest of his life in Trinidad. And when he lost his position, he sounded like he was going to cry and all he keeps telling me even to this day is, "I don't want to leave my patients. I don't want to go anywhere. I don't know why they're doing this to me." And I just wanted you guys to hear this perspective of it because now we have at least six families that I personally know that are no longer going to Pueblo, that are putting our money here in Trinidad to a doctor that was here. And now we're back to Pueblo again. And it's so, you don't realize how scary it is when we have a newborn who can't talk to you and you have to make that hour and a half drive. So that's all I wanted to let you guys know about. I just wanted you to know that he was such a good doctor and there's plenty of people in town that you could talk to. And again, you guys are just our voice, you're our voice. So whatever you choose to do, I have complete faith in you. Somebody was telling me a lot of places the hospital board is elected like you guys are. That makes a lot of sense to me. I mean, I just don't know what to do at this point. We'll find another doctor. We'll probably end up going to Raton where Dr. Lopez might end up or who knows where he'll be or finding another doctor in Pueblo, but that's all. I just wanted you guys to know how we felt. And I'm not the best public speaker, so thank you very much for listening to me.
Ma'am, have you spoken to anyone else besides us?
We went to the hospital board. I went and talked to the hospital board at their meeting and I let them know and they told me that they were getting rid of him because of economic reasons, but I know that he sees six families with multiple kids and I know that there were more families that were going to switch over to him, so I don't know what they're looking at.
And what next do you plan to do?
Like I said, we'll probably have to, if he relocates anywhere within driving distance, I'm going to keep him as a doctor. I'd like to keep my babies going to the same pediatrician. If not, I'll have to find another.
Understanding that the hospital is not only the city's, but it's regional, have you spoken to the commissioners at the county?
No. Like I said, I've never been the one to do this kind of thing, but I just feel like so sad. It's such a loss for our community to lose this family. I mean, him and his wife and his children are amazing and they love it here. Well, then you know, they're wonderful people. I just hate for them to have this feel of Trinidad.
Well, you know, this isn't the only instance. Dr. Carlisle was released from them too and we had people come and talk to us about that too. So we understand the situation, it's just that it's nothing other than bring out the point that we can back up the other statements, we can do something, but other than that, it's a difficult situation because of the way that that board is appointed. It isn't elected, it's appointed by the board itself instead.
Yeah, and that might be something that we can fix some way. I have no idea, but you're our voice and you are more than me.
Does that board always, I mean, appointed?
Yes, since the hospital was built, yeah, it's been appointed.
So as far as you ladies not speaking with the county commissioners, you never spoke to the county commissioners or nothing like that yet?
I didn't even plan on speaking, it's just I found the whole thing so sad and I just thought that somebody should say something.
Well, I do agree with you on a lot of things. I do agree with you on a lot of things and I know that our hospital's an important asset to our, to our community and we know it's county owned, but I think that all of us, maybe not the city council or whatever, but you know, we have to voice our opinions to keep our hospital because it affects everybody in this community, not only Los Angeles County residents, but it affects our city, it affects our college, it affects our nursing home or whatever we have here. And I do agree with you and I think that you ladies should bring, to voice your opinions to maybe the commissioners and find out what they have to say and then maybe once everything we get settled here at City Hall and we have a good relationship between our city manager and our county clerk, Eric Leanne, maybe we can get together there and work something out. Like Frank said, it's a very touchy situation because you know, that's county owned and it's really a touchy situation, but you know, we have to support that hospital, we have to recruit doctors and like, you know, getting a doctor here for two months and all of a sudden he's gone another month and then get another doctor, so just dragging it out, but yeah, we, I'll support you.
Well, I appreciate you guys listening to me and like I said, I only came forward because you're our voice and you know, I just thought that you should know exactly what happened, that he didn't want to go, that him and his family, they love it here and they're very good to the people here, so.
This morning, I had an MRI this morning at Mount San Rafael Hospital and I went out there at 7:30 this morning and they put me in there and I was treated very good, the service was good to me and everything and you know, it was great for me, but yeah, I do hear your concerns and I hear the concerns of this community, so we'll, we'll see what we do.
I appreciate it and just one more thing, my husband pointed out, for growth, you have to have families, you have to have children. And if we don't have a place to take our children, then how can we grow? So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. The next agenda item is item number four, that is reports by the city manager and city attorney. Ms. Garrett, when you are ready, sir, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, remember the city council. Just to follow up, just to let you know that the finance director position closed on last Thursday. We did get three additional applications. We've got a total of 16 of which 15 we're going to take a look at. One of them got hired by the county already, which is good because he is here in the community and can continue to help. Rosie and I plan on taking a review of those. Actually Anna gave them to me today. We'll try to do interviews in the next couple of weeks and try to get someone on board And I've been keeping in contact with Rosie, of course, she's here quite often when I have the year end closeout and the timing's still going to work well. In fact, she goes, if you keep someone out of my hair, it would be beneficial to get a closeout done quicker, so, but she is wanting to help us with the interviews as well, so just wanted to give you that update. A couple of heads up of things coming up in the future. I am going to be going to the Southern District Counties, CCI is the Colorado Counties, meeting with Ms. Fabick on Friday. We're going to be meeting with, she invited me to come along and we're talking with CDOT about some of the current transportation issues in our area and a resolution to potentially oppose the plan to alter funding to favor areas with higher traffic volume. So I thought that was something important and she invited me to come along with her. You may have heard, there was a discussion today at the county commissioners about the cold bed methane produced water. I don't know if anyone on council was able to attend that meeting, but if you desire, we can get you some more information and they're wanting to come to a city council study session. We were hoping to tie it to where they could come to the county in the morning and then city council meeting in the evening, but they were not able to coordinate people's schedules to do that, so they're wanting to come back at a different time. So I'll get you some more information, but they are more than welcome, more than happy to come back and make a presentation to city council as well. And I think it would be advantageous to have it during a study session or work session, not as actual a council meeting. Lastly, I think you saw the article recently about the prison situation and the fact that state is looking at potentially reducing additionally prisons again. There is, and I believe Anna forwarded an email that we received from Leanne about a meeting tomorrow at 1 o'clock at the council of the commissioners' chambers to have some discussion on that. I would encourage everyone to attend if you can. I myself and the mayor will be a little bit late. We've got a lunch to attend with Colonel from, Colonel Jones from Fort Carson. We've been trying to schedule that for some time, but we will be attending the meeting later. And then on Thursday, there's going to be a CCI meeting at Dever. I understand that Kirsten Hill is going to attend, but there's a potential to call in and I may actually go down to Leanne's office and sit in on a conference call to listen to that presentation as well. So just some heads up coming up. And then lastly, I've got a draft of an agenda for the council retreat that I will send around also with my questions. I was trying to finalize those today, but Captain was busy on some other issues, but we'll get those out to you in the next day.
Two comment, well, one comment, one question. I'm happy to see that you're working with Leanne and that we're building bridges with the county. Thank you. And my question is, public works director, what are we doing in the retreat in Trinidad?
I've actually started already putting some feelers out to some folks. I need, I want to have a discussion with Mr. Fernandez as well and as far as what type of person we should be looking for, I want to get that advertised as soon as I can to get that filled. In the meantime, I'll be, once Mr. Hill is left, I will be serving as, I guess, the acting, but I'm also relying on other staff to help step up. I think we won't need to hire any type of an intern type position to help out with that because I think we've got the staff that can help me keep things rolling. Mr. Hill has been very professional as well as keeping me up to date. We've been meeting regularly and trying to get me up to speed on some of the projects. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from members of council?
I have a prior commitment for tomorrow afternoon, so I will be unable to attend the meeting regarding the prison, so hopefully there are some other members on council who can attend.
All right. Mr. Matei and Mr. Bernado are both on the table and then Ms. Miles, appreciate that. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
And Mr. Downey, do you have any report or information to share with council?
Madam Mayor, council, I hate to disappoint you, but I don't have anything to report on aside from having bothered all of you all day. I, I've not bothered you all enough for one day, so I have nothing else. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from council? The next agenda item is item five, which is typically our committee reports. It just so happens that this evening, we do not have It just so happens that this evening we do not have any reports scheduled, so we will move to the next agenda item, and that is unfinished business. And we have been very diligent, we don't have any unfinished business to attend to at this meeting, so moving right along, we will begin, our miscellaneous business items. The first one is 7A, and that is to consider approval of a retail liquor license renewal for RJ Sales Incorporated doing business as RJ's Discount Liquor at 2132 Freedom Road. Is a representative from RJ Sales Incorporated present this evening?
Yes, I am.
Oh, welcome, thank you. Would you care to come forward and make any comments to council? We just, we don't want to put you on the spot, but we do want to welcome you and acknowledge your presence.
Thank you for having me. Just wondering where everything's going great, and I really appreciate you all letting me start the business here, I've been really enjoying it.
Thank you. If everything is in order, I believe we're ready to entertain a motion to approve the renewal of the retail liquor store license.
I'd move for approval of the retail liquor store license by RJ Sales Inc.
Second. Motion by Ms. Bolton. Second by Ms. Miles. Discussion or questions? And I believe we're ready for the roll call. Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Alaskas?
Yes.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you. The next agenda item is item 7B, and that is appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Mr. Greg Calvert and Mr. Pat Patrick are seeking appointments to Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Both gentlemen were introduced to council at our work session last week, and I don't see them in the audience this evening. And if everything's in order, I will entertain a motion on the appointments of Greg Calvert and Pat Patrick to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
They are not here to change their mind. Their interest continues, and based on that, I move that we accept both of them for placement on our board.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Matei, second by Mr. Shu. Are there any questions from members of council? Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Matei asked about terms for the Parks and Recreation Board, and I did go back and confirm they are coincident with city council terms.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We're ready for the roll call. Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Alaskas?
Yes.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
The next agenda item is 7C, and this is an appointment, appointments to the Tourism Board. Ms. Cheryl Clark and Mr. Scott Kamlin have requested reappointment to the Tourism Board. Both individuals were introduced to council at our work session last week. And I don't see them in the audience, so I will entertain a motion to appoint Cheryl Clark and Scott Kamlin to the Tourism Board.
I move that we accept both of them to the board.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Matei, second by Ms. Bolton. Any questions from members of council?
There was just the two empty vacant spots on that, right? On that board?
That's correct, yeah, now we have a full board. Any other questions? I believe we're ready for the roll call. Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Alaskas?
Yes.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
The next agenda item is 7D, which is appointments to the Board of Appeals. Mr. Wayne Pritchard and Mr. Sam Coker have both requested reappointment to the Board of Appeals. Both individuals were also introduced to council at our work session last week. And at this time, I will entertain a motion on the reappointment of Wayne Pritchard and Sam Coker to the Board of Appeals.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Bolton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Alaskas. Any questions from council? And I think we're ready for the roll call. Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Alaskas?
Yes.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
The next agenda item is 7F, and that's to consider bid results for the purchase of aluminum sulfate for the city of Trinidad water treatment plant. This matter was presented at the last work session, and I believe it's, at that time was expressed that staff's recommendation was to award the contract to the low bidder, DPC Industries, in the amount of $32,634. And Mr. Aker, do you have any comments or corrections or observations about this?
No, nothing has changed since the presentation. I think that's the appropriate way to go.
Thank you. So if everything's in order, I will entertain a motion to approve the award to DPC Industries in the amount of $32,634.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Bolton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shu. Any discussion or questions? And seeing that, we're ready for the roll call. Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Alaskas?
Yes.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
The next agenda item is item nine, that's the approval of payroll, and I would request that we have a motion to approve payroll for the time period from January 19, 2013, through February 1, 2013.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Bolton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Benado. Any discussion? And seeing that, we're ready for the roll call. Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Alaskas?
Yes.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
The next agenda item is item eight, payment of bills. Are there any questions regarding the bills that appeared in your council papers?
One of the questions had to do with the numerous amendments to the Chronicle News for things that were several months past, and why are they just now being paid in this fiscal year as opposed to last year?
Mr. Fabick, can I ask you a few, or give an answer?
I do not know that, but I can give an answer for you and provide that to all the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or requests for clarification regarding anything that are in the bills? May I have a motion to approve the payment of bills?
Omen.
Motion by Mr. Matei.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shu. Any further discussion? Seeing that, I think we're ready for a roll call. Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Alaskas?
Yes.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
The next agenda item is item nine, that's the approval of payroll, and I would request that we have a motion to approve payroll for the time period from January 19, 2013, through February 1, 2013.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Bolton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Benado. Any discussion? And seeing that, we're ready for the roll call. Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Alaskas?
Yes.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Having completed all posted business for the regular meeting, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Omen.
Motion by Mr. Benado.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bolton. Any discussion? And Bolton?
Yes.
Benado?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Alaskas?
Yes.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
The time is now 8:00 PM, and the regular meeting is adjourned. We'll take a brief recess and then resume the special meeting, which involves the executive